Let's go ahead and call the meeting of May 6th to order. Please stand for the invocation. We have a special guest today for the invocation, it's Rabbi Litvin.
Almighty God, and God of our fathers, great, mighty, and revered. God, in your abundant love, I invoke your blessing today on this honorable body to Jeffersonville City Council. We beseech you, a merciful and gracious God, guide these honorable men and women as they gather here today in recognition of one of your seven universal laws for all mankind, the commandment to govern by just laws. We stand together in the wake of several attacks on innocent people during peaceful worship, and locally on the attack of two judges. I ask all those gathered here this evening to join me in a moment of silence for those injured and those lost. What a powerful feeling. God, you gave us the gift of speech, and when we refrain and concentrate in words, it gives us a sense of peace, a chance to reflect, and an opportunity for personal reckoning. As we gather before you to govern ourselves, we know our first obligation is to ensure the education of our children, not just in geography and math, but in morals and ethics as well. Perhaps the best way we can accomplish this is by instituting such a moment of silence in all Jeffersonville schools as is mandated in our state law. God, bless the efforts of this council and grant them success in all that they do on behalf of the city and for the benefit of all its inhabitants. And lastly, we ask you to bring about the promised era of everlasting peace and justice for all your creations, may be speedily in our days, and let us say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebatable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Rabbi. Roll call please.
Counselperson White.
Present.
Counselperson Maples.
Here.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Here.
Counselperson Gill.
Here.
Counsel President Zostadny.
Present.
Counselperson Owen.
Here.
Counselperson Ellis.
Here.
Counselperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record reflect, eight council members present, Counselperson Jan Payne.
We have minutes to approve from April 15th. Motion to approve second. We have motion second to approve the minutes of April 15th. Any changes or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We also have minutes from the special meeting of April 15th. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion second to approve the special meeting minutes of April 15th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, approval of the agenda.
No, we have no seven.
Minutes from the 22nd. Make motion to approve.
A second.
We have motion second for the minutes of the 22nd. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, now approval of the agenda.
The motion to approve.
Second. We have motion second to approve the agenda. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Claims to be approved.
We have civil city claims tonight for $1,922,029.49.
I just wanted to bring the attention, because we've got a full house here, and they look at our voucher here, and the majority of that is, and this on page 13 or 911, share of $500,360.05, that's our last payment for the year, so we paid up for that. And then of course, with big, the $709,254.25 was in healthcare. We had some extra expenses because we hired a second police department, so if anyone gets shocked that almost $2 million was worth of labeled out. All in order?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to approve the civil city claims of $1,922,029.49.
Second.
We have motion second, any questions?
I got a question, it's mine, here on page three. There's under the top grouping, the next to last one, it's for Mission Barbecue, but that's under subscription and dues.
Yeah, that's not the correct count, yeah.
Thanks. Alright, so we have motion second to approve the amount with that one small edit. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes, and then we have Parks minutes, our Parks claims to be approved.
They are $164,162.47.
All claims in order?
Yes.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the Parks claim of $164,162.47.
Second. We have motion second to approve the Parks claims as submitted. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Report of the clerk.
None this time, sir.
Alright, first up on the agenda is, in ordinance 2018 OR 67 was tabled until May, it is now May. And my understanding is, we need to probably take that off, because the next ordinance is related to this.
Yeah, you need, I'll make a motion to remove OR 2018 OR 67 with, should state with no action taken on that one.
Mr. Merkley?
Yes.
With no action taken.
Second. We have a motion second to remove the item of 2018 OR 67 with no action taken. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Has been removed, no action.
Next up, we have 2018 OR 77, and Mr. Merkley.
If you recall, several months ago, this was brought to you as a proposed amendment to the Jeffersonville zoning ordinance to address regulations for non-commercial livestock. As required by state law, you referred that to the Planning Commission for its consideration. They have done that, and they have sent this to you with a favorable recommendation, but they have made changes from the ordinance as it was submitted to them. The changes were proposed by Counselperson White. I don't believe there were a lot of changes, but I will defer to him, because they were his proposals that were adopted by the Planning Commission. He explained what was changed in the ordinance as compared to what it was before you submitted it to the Planning Commission.
Just for clarification, we have to approve the exact same language if it's to move forward, otherwise it would start the whole process over again, or keep the existing ordinance in place, the previous ordinance that's in place.
Yes. Well, there currently is no, currently there is no ordinance, we have no ordinance currently.
Okay. Let's defer to Mr. White for the changes.
So on G, 728G on page, oh, page number. G, on D, it says commercial farming is only allowed in A1. So I guess we had some issue where someone was doing that commercial, doing commercial farming in a residential area, and that was a concern. On, at C, it says the following, it used to read, "The following accessory uses shall be by right in A1 and by, I believe, special exception in Art 1, 2, and 3 announced by right in A1, R1, R2, and R3." C, C, or CD, roosters is written in there, because the, there was a restriction against them, so they are not prohibited under this. Those removed. I believe those were the main issues.
And so where something is, like an HD, where it is a line put through, that line is meant to be put through, that's the one that removes the rooster.
I think that was writ, that was where it used to be a prohibition against roosters. But in the modified version, Larry must have written, "Roosters are permitted, not in excess of eight total." That's not what he was supposed to write. That was, that line was supposed to be eliminated.
The one, the one.
Hence the line crossed out.
I think they crossed that out because they wanted, they didn't want there to be eight roosters permitted, it was eight chickens, cows, roosters, whatever.
Total.
Total of eight.
And that mirrors the animal ordinance, which allows up to eight dogs and cats. Anything above that, you have to get a kennel license.
And this is a public hearing, correct? Alright, with that, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and allow the public to speak. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak for, or against, or on this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and...
I know there's a lot of folks here, it may seem strange that we're talking about roosters, but you would not believe how much time we've spent on roosters and chickens.
We do have a question.
Four years.
Where it says that...
No, yeah, we've closed public comment, go ahead, council, you have questions or concerns?
So it says, "The following accessory uses shall be in right." So is this saying that horses, cows, lambs, mules, goats, sheep, swine, up to eight chickens, roosters, and all the rest can be in R1, R2, and R3?
Yes. You gotta read the whole thing. Then you have to go down to D.
Yeah, I read that, I'm just...
So you can't have a horse unless you have a large piece of property.
Right, so even if you're zoned R1, you're going to have to have 15,000 square feet to have what's permitted above.
Which is a third of an acre.
Right. So when we have folks in the 6th district, or some of the other districts, that have large plots that aren't zoned for agriculture, but they still have animals, this allows that to take place.
Not compliant with the ordinance in the very beginning.
In the very beginning. But if you have a situation where someone has, say, cows in a subdivision, this is still restrictive of that, that's not going to be permitted. It should make lots of people happy.
Question, did you say a third?
It's a third of an acre. 15,000.
When we have subdivisions, a third's an acre.
My subdivision does.
And then...
To answer your question.
So we've got permitted density of one animal for each third of an acre.
And if I'm understanding this right, you're going to have planning and zoning enforce this, or...
Planning and zoning would enforce this, just as they do any other zoning violation.
Any other questions or concerns?
You're voting on the ordinance as it reads after the change is made by the Planning Commission, so if you make any changes to the ordinance now, then it goes back to Planning Commission, and we start this all over.
So if we pass this, and somebody calls and complains about pigs in their neighborhood...
Might even call you.
Who, I'm sure they will call me, but who do I call then? Do I call a code enforcement officer, or Nathan Pruitt in planning, or...
I would call Nathan Pruitt in planning, or someone in his department. Because it's actual zoning. And we've modeled this because other, most other communities deal with as a zoning issue, because it's actually land use as opposed to animal control.
Gotcha. Since this is related to zoning, is it a one and done, or is it still...
One and done.
Alright.
Would Nathan Pruitt in planning have any authority to go out and force a change, or how would he go about...
No different than any other zoning violation that we would have to enforce, which we do. Sometimes we have to go to court to do it.
And then ultimately, someone, somebody gets a pig, and they're not supposed to have a pig in my next door neighbor, he could have three pigs, he has a nicer. Ultimately, someone's going to come and take those pigs, because after a court, after a process, after a court...
After a process.
Someone is the ones who take the pigs.
We're not going to do anything without due process, and all likelihood, courts being involved.
And right now, you're saying there's nothing on the books?
Nothing.
They could have it in a...
Previously, years ago, our zoning ordinance did deal with this. For some reason, it was taken out, and then it was in the animal control ordinance, then it was taken out of the animal control ordinance because, for some reason, and now there's this gray area that fluffes in the great rooster-chicken debate of 2019.
Can we, as a, as a body, next, if we put it on the agenda next time, we can make amendments to this without it going back to planning and zoning once it's on the...
You would have to go back, you know, you have to go back to planning and zoning. Any zoning ordinance that you initiate, goes to Planning Commission, and then comes back to you. Or Planning Commission can initiate it.
Let's say, we decide we've gotten complaints, and we decide we just don't want to have any horses in R1, 2, or 3. And if we send that back to planning and zoning, and they say negative recommendation, does it still come back to us, or does it just die in planning and zoning?
It would die.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I mean, I have to say... Want to increase the square feet for the large animals?
That's, that's one thing that concerns me with this, is I don't expect any of my neighbors to get pigs soon, or cow, but by this, they could. And you could run into some really bad situations with people just being spiteful even, which happens occasionally with neighbors. So I think it needs to be increased. Now, I don't want to start this, this has been such a long process, I don't want to be the one that makes this process start over. Hence my question to you, I think the Planning and Zoning Committee, we have members here, I'd like to get their input, would they be, if we passed it, and then come back and say, okay, now we want to, we need to increase that 15,000 square feet, a third of an acre, there's plenty of homes in Jeffersonville that has a third of an acre. Nobody wants a cow living on that third of an acre. So would they be conducive to doing that, or do I just have to vote no on this? And if they still pass, even if I vote no, of course, but that's where I'm at, that's not enough land. I don't want that in neighborhoods, R1, 2, and 3 is not the place for large bovine...
What do you think is appropriate?
I mean, I'd say an acre. And even at that, I know it doesn't encapsulate all of them, for example, my lot's 1.3.
Right.
But it won't encapsulate all of them, but at least if an acre, that gets into be a little bit of a field. A third of an acre is still, I'm being arbitrary, it's a yard. You know, that is still a yard, and I just created that out of the ether. But I think at an acre, I would be much more satisfied, because there are people, particularly in my district, out in the north end of town, who have large plots of property, that are zoned R1, and it prevents them from having anything. So we, you know, I'm ready to find that even mix, but for me, 15,000 square feet is not enough.
I agree.
I agree. But I also agree with the part where I lean towards just passing it to get it done, and not start the process, because it's been so long, but I'd definitely be open for a change in the future that seems more reasonable.
If we initiate the process, do they at least have to take it up?
Yes. So if you have a horse, you have to have a place to keep it, so, and then there are regulations against that as well, and where that structure can be built.
You are correct, if you have a horse correctly, you have to have a structure. But who's to say they'll have a correct, who's saying they're doing it correctly? They may not have a barn.
I think it's ordinance spells it out.
I think you have to, this ordinance spells out what you have to have.
This is, I have 1.3 acres, I have a pole barn in the back, I can easily fence the back part, and I'm in the middle of the neighborhood, but I shouldn't have a cow. That's, that's where I'm at. So that's what, I'm within, we can just talk about it later, I'll push, I won't be the person that leads the charge to say no, but I will be wanting change of this made, and we can have the discussion later, but at least we have something on the books to where we can do something about it, because it sounds like right now, we can't do anything about it.
I don't think you'd get much pushback if you increased that number for the large animal.
Okay.
And then it wouldn't come back.
I don't, I don't think you will either, but...
If we amend this, and increase that number for large animals, to whatever number you...
I'm saying after we pass this, pass it, and then go back and say, hey, how about changing this?
And I'm saying, if you want to amend it, to increase that number, we can do that, and Planning Commission, I'm pretty sure, will not push back on that. Then you would not see it again.
He's saying change it now, and they can agree to the change, and then it'll...
And then it goes back to them, and it comes back to work, that's fine, that's fine with me.
If they pass the exact same thing we pass, that's done.
Yes, yes, correct.
I'm fine, I'm, we're just having an open conversation, if everybody's alright with that, I certainly am.
So we want to make a motion to...
I think this, but the compromise is...
So make a motion to amend.
Amen.
You've got to pick a number.
Yeah.
I'll say an acre.
Yeah, an acre, motion.
Make a motion. Motion to amend, I've lost track of the number. With D, A, changing from 15,000 square feet to one acre, and for those, that's approximately 45,000 square feet, I did look it up a few minutes ago. OR, what's the number?
77.
77.
Second. We have motion and second to amend 2018 OR 77 to, for D, A to be one acre. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, is amended.
Now you've got to vote on the amended.
That's right. We have motion and second to approve 2018 OR 77 as amended. Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, so we'll go back to Planning and zoning, hopefully for their final approval. Next up, number... Heather Metcalf, public hearing regarding additional appropriation. Is that now right?
Yes, thank you. This is for 165,000 for land, this has to do with the orally drainage property. No changes from the last meeting.
Oh, this is a public hearing, it wasn't done last time?
Yeah, public hearing.
Alright.
For this? Yes.
Mr. Merkley?
Go ahead, I'm waiting, and then I'm on the phone.
Alright, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for, against, or concerning 2018, 2019 OR 15? Anyone here to speak? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close public comment? At this time, be happy to entertain a motion from the council.
I'll make a motion to approve 2019 OR 15 on the third and final.
We have motion second to pass 2019 OR 15 on the third and final read. Any questions, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And one, and one other matter, since we are on a deadline of the 10th, May 10th, to close on this transaction, we've already had one extension. I would request that a motion and second, an approval to amend the claim list to include that $165,000 to be paid to the seller of the property.
So you want to motion to amend tonight?
So we can issue, so we can close on this, this week with that, because otherwise...
Some moved.
Second.
Do you want a new total for the claims?
Yes, please.
Are you including all of these in the claim?
No.
No, just the 165, just the 165. Close on drainage project on water.
Do you have a new total?
Yeah. You ready?
So I think we are looking for a motion to amend?
Oh, I just gave them, I already did the, I think, did I get a second?
Yeah, a second.
I told you, a motion and second to amend the claims to include the 165,000. Any questions, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next one, there's been no changes from the last meeting either.
It's public hearing.
Which one?
Public hearing.
Okay, yeah. So we're at ordinance 2019 OR 16, which is another additional appropriation, and this is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against 2016, 20, I'm sorry, 2019 OR 16? Seeing none, oh, go ahead. It's an additional appropriation?
This one. The overtime was reimbursement from the flood control, and then the YMCA is a request from Counselperson White, and then the planning and place making is for improvements to trees, I believe, and that's appropriating cash.
So is there anyone here to speak regarding this? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. This time, be happy to entertain a motion.
For you, as always, I have taken a stand against ordinances of additional appropriation. As per the State Board of Accounts that have advised us against continuing to do additional appropriations, I will continue to vote against them.
Motion to approve OR 16, second. We have motion second to approve 2019 OR 16. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
One against?
Two against.
Is it two against?
Is the second person?
Nathan, Nathan Aron. Next up, new business, number 13. Ordinance changing the zoning map designation of certain tract of property, Mr. Merkley?
This is in reference to a rezoning request for property located at 1805 and 1807 East 8th Street. The property is currently zoned commercial, and also residential, family residential, and the request is, is to rezone that to institutional for the operation of a church or a religious organization, because they also have their offices there. If you were, if you want to know exactly where this is, this is the old Red Cross Building on 8th Street. Again, this comes to you from the Planning Commission with a favorable recommendation, and I believe the applicant has representation here this evening, and I will turn the matter over to him, and he can give you more details, and again, this is also a public hearing.
Good evening. Brad Benson, Applegate Fire Department, I think he kind of summed it up. If there's any questions, I can walk through everything, or answer anything anybody would like. I believe my client is here, so if there's any other things I can't answer, he can. So is there anything...
At planning and zoning, it was a favorable recommendation?
Yes.
Did anyone speak against it?
Nope, any...
Any letters or emails against it?
I have not received any pushback, so...
This is for use of a church?
Correct, and honestly, it's kind of fixing the zoning as well, because the zoning is divided up, commercial and residential, throughout the property, so it doesn't, the way the property sits, if you're familiar with it, they're kind of connected and they go together, so this kind of correct, fixes the zoning a little bit.
The Red Cross, where the Red Cross currently...
Yes, ma'am.
With this a public hearing, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for, or against, or regarding 2019 OR, what's the number?
17.
17, regarding a rezoning at 1805 to 1807 East 8th Street. Anyone here to speak?
I have a question, I mean, this is for a mom, but I have a question.
Sure.
Have to get up, dang it.
You have to get up? Yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, be sure. Ma'am, please speak your name.
Swear.
Just give us your name and address, and go ahead and share your concern and question.
Susan O'Neil, 26th Center Street, I don't want to use my energy up on this, but I just wondered if it's going to be a church or a office, and is the church already there, or is it going to be a brand-new church?
So it'll be, it'll be a brand-new church. The church itself will use both buildings, so they'll have mass, they'll have ceremonies in one part of the administrative buildings that will be run by them on the other side of it.
Not that it should matter, but can I say what religion? Can I say Baptist, or, not that it matters, I just wondered if it's going to be...
Well, I can tell you, the applicant, the applicant name itself is the early church of Yeshiva HaMashia.
I don't know what that is, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't...
As far as the religion itself, I think we're here sort of with the zoning of the church. church.
No, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something that was, you know, you say, I've gotten suspicious of things. So I just wanted to make sure if it be a church or an office, you know, it's going to be legal.
Okay, yes, it's O'Neil.
Legal.
So, did he answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for, against this rezoning? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close, public comment. Does the council have any other questions or concerns or discussion items?
Was there any comments or anything on parking?
There was not, there was not any questions.
No, it's a large ambulance.
Does the applicant already maintain a church somewhere else, or is this a new venture for them?
No, they do, there is a church, but it's out of a home, so it's relatively small. So I don't foresee parking to be an issue by any means. I believe, and I can be corrected here, but I think it's one-third of the overall capacity that they have to require parking for. Since they have not purchased the building yet, there should be closing, I think within, might even be this week, that they're closing on the property. This is not a contingency of closing, by the way. So they're purchasing the property. Once they get in there, they'll be able to tell the capacity, and then if there is parking would be an issue, then we, there wouldn't be a problem to come back and address it at that time.
Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve twenty nineteen OR seventeen. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye. All right, opposed? Passes.
Thank you all.
Next up, Ms. Metcalf again. An ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department.
Yes, this is a request from the police department.
Motion to twenty nineteen OR eighteen, first and second. Second. Have a motion and second to pass twenty nineteen OR eighteen on the first and second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye. All opposed?
I have a question. Somebody from police department can answer, is here, if you don't know who they are. Is this something we need to plan for? It's, you know, you're going from other supplies to equipment. Is this some kind of equipment that we need to... Oh, come on.
Turn your mic on. Turn your mic on.
My voice carries. All right, my only question is, this is leaving other supplies and going to equipment. Is this some kind of equipment that we need to plan for? Like, is this something that's going to be reoccurring, or something we need to plan for next year? Or is this just something like a one-off thing that is just getting covered through other supplies?
Well, the twenty thousand, was that, that line was depleted by the large payment for the radios, so we're putting that money back into that, the equipment for such as tasers and other equipment that's going to be from now to the end of the year. So that should last the rest of the year. That's what we're anticipating. So it should not be reoccurring, to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Metcalf, you're up again. Another ordinance of additional appropriation.
Yes, this is a fun one, if you can hopefully follow along. The first four from the street department are all appropriating revenues from the sale of assets. The first for vehicles is ten thousand to go towards the vehicle maintenance, new vehicle that I believe the director of vehicle maintenance discussed at the last meeting. And then the contractual services is for the auction fees. And then the ten thousand and forty thousand are just to reappropriate those revenues that they got for the sale of different assets that they sold. Second to last is for vehicles for the police department, and that is reimbursement for insurance claims that they had received reimbursements for. And then also, the last one is the vehicle request for the forty-seven-five for vehicle maintenance. So the forty-seven-five plus the ten at the top. And then the balance, I believe he can take care of within the budget that he has.
So everything besides the forty-seven-five at the bottom is a reimbursement of monies that have come in?
Yes.
And the forty-seven-five is the vehicle that we approved for vehicle maintenance?
Yes.
That services all of our...
Our apartment, yes.
Right. This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing?
No.
No? I was just asking. I saw a public, a public hearing is going to be May twentieth on that, so we can't fast it all the way through, so.
I have a question. Heather, I know you passed the papers out earlier, but I'm looking at it right now. The Lloyd for the fire, what will the balance be? We're taking it from the fund balance.
I believe that there is, right now, you currently have one hundred and sixty-five thousand of unbudgeted current-year revenue in that fund.
That's current-year revenue?
Current-year revenue. Not going into surplus or reserves or any of that kind of stuff.
Do you have, just kind of, how much is in the surplus for that fund?
Currently, there's two hundred and, or two million eight.
Thank you.
Motion to approve nineteen OR nineteen. On the first and second, please. We have a motion and second to pass twenty nineteen OR nineteen on the first and second reading. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five by saying aye. All opposed? Next up, attorney comments. We have a guest attorney representing us today. Don't you stand up and tell us who you are? It's Zach, right?
Yes, Zach here in place of Mary Potter today. No comments at this time.
All right, thank you. Department heads, are there any department heads here who'd like to speak? Mr. Northam, Paul, you want to speak today?
I'm sorry?
You want to speak today? Department head?
Yep.
Good thing I saw you back there.
So we've got a playground, Bob Hedge Park, that is in desperate need of a new surface, flooring surface. It's got a tile system that's been in there about twelve to fifteen years, not sure how long, but it's failing. We've had some people that have twisted their ankles in the spots that are failing. To go back, it was done incorrectly. Concrete should have been poured underneath of it, but it wasn't. It was placed right on top of the surface, the dirt, and the dirt is starting to deteriorate, which is causing some ruts in the playground area. So that was, the estimates or ballpark numbers we've been getting are around one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We don't currently have that in our budget, so I'm asking you if you would allow me to do an additional appropriation. And Heather is here to help answer some questions on where that money might come from. We originally talked about taking it from our park surplus money, and then she had some ideas about some edit money. So if you'd like to help out with this?
I can try. We all have here. Can I say something real quick before you?
Yes, sure.
Speak loud, can everybody hear me? Before we go into trying to find the money, I just wanted to speak up, I'm compelled to speak up, because I want to be a strong advocate to get this repaired. I went down and looked at it, and actually, some of you all know and don't know, when my niece Cara had to go with her brain tumor, I might cry thinking about it. She had feeding tubes, she had drain tubes. Bob Hedge Park was the only place I could take her, where she could be on the outside, she hung on to and be a kid. I mean, this park, I mean, one thing that we need to do is let the kids be a kid, especially when they have situations like that, where it's caving in the padding and all that. And I did go down and look at it, and it should have been done a long time ago. And I did ask councilperson Ron Ellis, because he is on the parks store to go down and look at that as well, and pretty much seen the same conditions as Paul is stating.
Yeah, you know, I don't normally vote against additional appropriations, but this is one I will support. I went down to Bob Hedge Park and to see for myself what the condition was, and there were a number of people there with their children that day at the park. And as I walked through, I saw a lot of large cracks where a child could really get hurt. And I talked to a lady that was there with her child, and she told me that she was there when a child got hurt by falling over some of the cracks or some of the material that was sticking up. And I, well, like I talked with Paul and I told him, I fully support that because something definitely needs to be done, or we're going to end up with one huge lawsuit from the situations that we have at Bob Hedge Park.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, Heather, regarding the, do you have an estimate of the amount and ideas of where it would come from?
The estimate is somewhere around one hundred and twenty thousand. It would be, need to be bid, publicly bid for that, so we don't have an exact price on that. If it was appropriation taken from the parks fund, that would bring your reserves probably down to close to your fifty, your minimum of fifteen percent. I personally like to have those reserves a little bit higher, just because that's a property tax fund, and we get our property taxes twice a year. So that's an opinion that I have on that. But then you all have also discussed doing one-and-done type issues out of edit. And currently, you have three hundred and seventy-eight thousand of unbudgeted current-year revenues in edit. So that's where I would hopefully think that you would all decide to take that out.
So as far as action, you're looking for...
We would need to have it on an ordinance for you all to approve it out of additional ordinance, but then I would need to know what fund you want me to take that out of. And then it would come to your next meeting.
Any comments about this?
I would be supportive of using some of the parks money, because it's a park, and using some of the others to supplement that, to keep it where we, you're comfortable, or we're comfortable, I guess, with that, and not pay it all out. That would be my preference, but I'm supportive of...
I just need some direction from you all of how much and where.
It sounds like he's saying fifty-fifty.
Yes, sure.
Any other comments?
I'm of the same thing, sorry, sir. I'm of the same line of thought with Nathan, but honestly, I'd like to see more of it come out of parks and less come out of edit. Again, I'm not going to be the one that throws a fit and stands alone, but I mean, this is a park issue. This didn't happen yesterday, so I think the money should be coming out of parks, or they should have, you know, it should be out of that budget more. And it seems like, and I don't have a number in front of me, that edit has been, I mean, this is where we go to, this is our rate fund, and we're only in May, and have three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars left. Doesn't seem like a whole terrible lot to me. So I'd like to see whatever, Heather, now, and now this is where I defer to you, if that balance for parks goes down, down too low towards the fifteen percent, I mean, I would want as much as that can be used from parks to be used from parks, and then the rest be picked up by edit.
As much as can be used from parks?
And still stay where it's comfortable.
Would be the minimum of fifteen percent for your reserves.
Okay.
So that's your...
And what is it, how much could you take and still be at that fifteen percent threshold?
Around two hundred thousand.
Oh.
We only need one-twenty.
Right.
Where did the one-twenty estimate come from?
One-twenty, I talked to three different playground suppliers, and I got estimates, but not official quotes yet.
Okay.
And the highest was one-twenty, it was around one-fifteen to one-twenty.
And they would install it?
That's installed, yes.
Why didn't they put concrete down? I don't think you were, I don't know if you were in charge of the parks ten years ago, but any idea why they wasn't?
It was a private park.
Why?
It was privately done.
Okay.
So if realistically, we give you the nod to go out on a forbid, then we know a hard number, and then could we not, at that point, say, now let's do the money?
You can't award a bid without, you can't award a bid without having the appropriation.
So if...
But if it comes in less, then he would not spend that. Or we could do a reduction to bring it down.
And if we give you a fund tonight to move forward with, and then bids come in, we could change, as long as you have a fund that, tonight, that says you can pay for it, we could change that if we need to before paying it, correct? Before you advertise and all that concern.
I think she said award a bid.
We have to make the appropriation before we can...
And we first have to do an ordinance of additional appropriation.
Correct.
So this is just to get a feel for the council as far as if they're, if we're willing to do it, and then an idea of how we want to get the funds, from which funds to take the money. And to me, it sounds like there's definitely a will to do it, so that's good. And the second part is, more from parks than edit. But I think they're going to defer to you, that's what I'm hearing.
I'm conservative on our reserves, is my personal feelings, and I like to have tax rate funds to be somewhere around a twenty-five percent reserve.
Which one?
Which does not accomplish what you all want to do, but you all are the ones that approve those, so.
We're below the twenty-five percent.
I just have to have no lower than fifteen.
We're below that even in general.
I would suggest you submit it, and if someone wants to change it, they can amend it.
It has to be advertised in the paper.
I understand.
And then so...
The amount?
Yes, both. And where?
And where.
And where?
But if they want, if they want to amend it, then we can advertise it again if it goes from a different fund.
Or we could advertise it in six funds, and you can deny all the others and pick one.
Or if a couple council would like to get together with Paul and you and bring it up before you do all your advertising and all of that.
I would say, I think there's a will that wants to be done, and I think there's a will, something's got to come out of parks. Other than that, I think if you propose a reasonable ordinance, it's going to pass. That's the feel I have, so at least throw a little bit out of parks, I believe you'll...
I heard fifty-fifty, do you, I mean, is that what?
How about, how about if we say a hundred thousand out of parks, twenty out of edit, and if we need to tweak that, advertise that?
Yep.
That covers you. And then if for some reason we have to change that, and there's a process, we can change.
You'd have to go through the additional appropriation request again.
That would be...
Set the motion?
That's a motion.
Second. A motion and second, as described.
All right.
All those in favor, signal five by saying aye. All opposed? There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads? Any other department heads here to speak? All right, next up is public comment. I have a list here. Again, you have three minutes maximum to speak. When you, when you come up, give your name and your address, and Mr. Stewart's going to keep the time for me. Try not to repeat the same ideas, and if you can group together, that'd be great. And also, just for clarification, it's not a back-and-forth question-and-answer period. The council may make a comment or two, but for the most part, this is just your con, your public comment. So with that, first up, yes?
We have one member who would like to be added to that.
Sure.
Let's see.
All right.
Twenty-one, Michael Harris.
All right, Mr. Visser, you're last. First to speak, Kelly Lehman. Go up to the podium, speak in a microphone, please.
Hello, council members. I'm Kelly Lehman, I live at forty-five Louise. And I'm sure most of us are here to talk about the same thing, which is the Mariposa Springs wanting to build a permanent support housing in the Optimist Club location at sixty-one Louise Street. And a lot of, almost all of us in this room didn't get something in the mail or get survey. We didn't hear anything about it until recent, and so I don't know if anyone else wants to come up and talk about this. Like, I know this couple here received a cer, or didn't receive a survey, but was on a list, the mayor's list this morning, so if they want to speak, I'm more than happy for them to bring up anything extra.
This is your time, they may have signed up.
I'm sure they have, yeah. I just, I'm opposed to it because I feel that it's not an appropriate area for that type of facility. There's plenty of other commercial buildings or spaces that's available, I can name three right now. They're right here off Tenth Street, one is, and there's the Old Frank Steakhouse location, there's the old Offen Highway Thirty-One, there's that abandoned hotel that you could put that kind of facility at, and just don't feel that a residential neighborhood is the right setting. So that's really...
Doug Bruner, Brewer?
Yeah, I'm talking about the same property.
Just confirm your name and address, please.
Douglas Brewer, fifty-nine Louise, right next door to the sixty-one Louise property. And we didn't get a letter, but we were on the list that said we received a letter, and but somebody did, from the BWI organization that's buying the property, did come... And...but somebody did, from the BWI organization that's buying the property, did come and say they was a representative of that company and was...they kind of misrepresented theirself to me, saying that they had just...was going to redo the park there, and asked me if they was wanting to...if I had any suggestions on what would go in on the new park. And I suggested a walking path, and they said that would be great, and then they just went on their way. Put me down as an approval, but I am very much opposed to this, because I was misinformed.
Thank you. Mike Turner?
Ladies and gentlemen, this property that they are wanting to build on will be fifty feet from my back door.
Yeah, name and address, please.
Mike Turner, ten-thirty Sharon Drive. There was no communication to me directly or anyone in my household as to what was going to be going on back there until maybe a week ago. And that came from someone that doesn't even live actually in the neighborhood. They were the ones that gave us information on what was going on. Everyone that's in this room just about, I can almost promise you, has been told something different about what was happening with that property. All of us have been misled on more than one occasion as what's going on with this property. We've been told everything from a revitalized park to an elderly care facility, to an apartment building, to what's...we've been told recently with the maintenance, with the facility that's going to be there now. And I can tell you that myself personally, I will fight every one of you if I have to to keep this from being in my backyard. Because it is my backyard. I have fought tooth and nail to be able to purchase my home and provide a safe environment for myself and my family. And at this point, I feel like someone involved with this was dishonest and are going to put something in my backyard that is unsafe for myself and my family. And I'm not going to stand for it. I'm not going to stand for it. And I don't mean to be disrespectful to any of you, and I'm not going to point fingers at anybody for anything, but somebody told us...somebody sold us the bill of goods. Somebody didn't tell people what was actually happening here, because if they would have told us what was going on, we wouldn't be standing here right now. I can promise you that. And I will say this, I agree, there is a need for a facility of this nature in this city. But in a residential neighborhood, in any residential neighborhood in this city, is inappropriate. Inappropriate. You have more than enough facilities in this city to put this facility in and not affect residential neighborhoods. So I would suggest that if this needs to be done and you want to have this done, that it be put in one of those facilities and not in anyone's neighborhood. So that it's not in anyone's backyard, so it's somewhere where it could be monitored. Thank you.
Let me just say that no one is being disrespectful when you're sharing your opinion and your concerns, so that's totally fine. The more...and I appreciate everybody's passion, but the more we clap, the longer everything takes. And I think it's pretty clear where you all stand. But we'll go ahead and keep going through the names here. Vicki Harris? And feel free, if anybody says it's already been said, you could move...you don't have to take up all three minutes. You are welcome to it, but you don't have to.
My name is Vicki Harris, and I live at eighteen oh five Long Street. My concern has been the lack of disclosure and clarity and honesty. I live on practically the corner of Springdale and Long. Springdale is the entrance to sixty-one Louise, the old Optimus Club, and it's literally a half block from where I live. I did not receive a phone call, I did not receive a letter, I did not receive a knock on my door. If they canvassed the neighborhood the way they said they should...the way they should have, it would have been at least, I'd say, all the homes on all the streets surrounding this facility. And as far as I know, that was not done. And if it was done, it was done during the day when this is a working-class neighborhood, when everybody was at work. So that upsets me. It upsets me to think that this would be another apartment complex, because it's not even appropriate for a regular apartment complex in this location, let alone the type of housing that they're talking about or considering. On Springdale Drive alone, directly, almost directly across the street from the entrance to this, is a daycare. I know of at least three bus stops to the public schools that are on Springdale Drive alone, and I shudder to think about kids that have to go in the dark in the wintertime and stand on these corners and wait for a bus with this type of facility. It's bad enough that we have the homeless situation that we do that's up on Tenth Street, the top of Tenth Street at Springdale, or at the other end of Springdale, and the local food mart there. That's already an issue and a problem. I know my daughter, years ago, was...had someone expose themselves to her right on the corner of Springdale and Long. We don't need any more types of facilities that are going to bring this type of people in. We want our children safe. This is a residential area. It's a quiet neighborhood. I've lived there for over thirty years. And with, except for the people that are using a cut-through on Long Drive from Colonial Drive, where that is public housing, that's the only issues that we've ever had in that neighborhood. So I don't like to think what's going to happen to our property values when we're sandwiched between those two types of facilities. I don't like the lack of disclosure. I don't like the lack of honesty, that the way that this has been handled. I don't think they've been upfront at all, because if they had done their job and talked to everybody the way they're insinuating that they did, we wouldn't all be here. And had they done their job, they wouldn't be wasting their time, our hours, to have to be here.
Thank you much. Let me just say in that regard, real quick, that we've done a number of rezonings, as council has, and there clearly is a breakdown of communication, because we've never had a meeting like this, I don't think, for a rezone, because it usually gets flushed out before we get to this stage. So I just wanted to share that thought. Next up, Angelina Rosa? Is she here? She'd like to speak, or you could pass? She passes. All right, Vicki Daniel?
I'm at twelve Louise, and I'm worried about the neighborhood, too. I don't...nobody's telling us exactly what's going back there. If we could just get some more information on it, because it's bad enough, we've got a lot of homeless people walking up and down the street, and we can't walk our dogs. We're afraid we're going...you know, something might happen. But I just thought we don't want to know what's going back there. Maybe they could put something else back there for the community. That's about all I could say about it.
All right, thank you. Just so everybody understands, there is a next...if we're...this is to move forward, there is a next stage that's required. There is a planning...development plan needs to be approved, and that is also a public process. So until that happens, nobody really knows for sure what's being proposed there. There's ideas, but it's not a real proposal until the plan is developed and goes for approval. So with that, we'll move on. Angie Bright? I'm sorry, Brials. I apologize in advance for the names I will mess up on.
Hello, my name is Angie Brials. I live on the corner of Long and Sharon on nine seventeen. Been there forty-eight years. Just got rid of a drug house on that street. Bought it for years. YPD, the old time maze here, where'd they leave from? Neighborhood drug house, every time. Really liked the YPD in town. Kind of kept them away every now and then. We had homeless out of that house. We had prostitutes out of that house. Now you're all one to put...I understand people need help. Get it, love it. So when you've dealt with it this long, in one house, two houses, but one for sure, and nobody in the city, nobody helped us but the police, that I'm very thankful for them, that we could call and say, "Hey, they're here, come get them." They would come and get them. But with this being here, I don't think this is going to help anybody. With the daycare across the street, with our kids, maybe one of these days, I might be a grandparent. I wouldn't want my child playing down there. I don't think you would want this in your neighborhood. If you would want it in your neighborhood, open a spot. Bring it into your neighborhood. No conflict. I would just like for you all to put it in your neighborhood and not mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, is it Carrier Hobbs? Carrier...sorry about the first name, I can't really read it. Mr. Hobbs? Oh, it's Lanier, okay.
Lanier Hobbs, I live at forty...fifty-four oh nine Utica Sellersburg Road. And I guess I'm not sure about what's happening with the breakdown and all the communication, you know, that we're hearing and talking about. But I guess we all have different ideas of what could have, would have, should have happened. But I guess the main question is, is there any perfect location for a facility like this? Does it truly exist, you know? And the answer's probably not. I live...I don't live in where they live, but I do live in this community. I was head coach this year at a local elementary school, a coach at a middle school. So I give of my time. So I do care about what's happening, you know, in this community and some of the things that we do. This project is actually...it's to reach out, to help or to bless people who are unfortunate and they need our help. And my brother and I, it's his project. And this is near and dear to our heart, mainly because we have a brother that was homeless. That came from a very nice family, middle-class family, worked. All of us, seven, seven, every one of us have college degrees of at least a masters, okay? But my brother chose not to reach out to his family, to help him. So this is something that happens in all of our families, could and maybe have, okay? So we're...you know, this is the...this is something that is really needed, not only in our community, but all across America. And it's just not happening. So what can we do to help solve this issue? You know, I don't really know the answer to this, but what I do know is this is the first step to help everybody in our community, not just certain segments of people, but people who truly need help. And are we going to continue to turn our back on these people? Now, I know, I don't know everything about that project, but I do know that it is...it does require a screening process. So it's just not like anybody that's homeless can walk up and get help. Well, people before me talked much longer. Okay, whatever, you know? The rabbi got up here and prayed for peace, for everybody in our community. And these homeless people are a part of our community, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. Next up, Gina Flynn.
Good evening. My name is Gina Flynn. I reside on thirty-nine Center Street. It's in close proximity to the Optimus Club. A few weeks ago, it was brought to my attention by another resident who informed me that the Optimus Club had been sold for four hundred thousand dollars and rezoned at a development from Indianapolis. Developer from Indianapolis would be building a fifty-unit, three-story apartment to house the homeless and recovering drug addicts. I was giving an article from the Tribune to support this claim. In the article, Lisa Gill stated that the neighborhood strongly supported this plan, which was a false statement to be made. This generated a lot of anger within the group, in which we decided to branch out and investigate by talking with other residents, doing surveys, phone calls, et cetera, trying to find out why we were not informed. I was told by Les Merkel and other elected officials that fifty-seven letters had been mailed out. After investigating, we found out a hundred...we surveyed a hundred and sixty residents who signed our petition. Only three people had received such a letter that was supposedly mailed to the residents, which most likely certified, right? Supposed to have been certified, along with the list of who these letters were mailed to and how many people responded to these so-called letters. I'm sure you can provide us with this provable information, right? Let me remind you, you are elected officials, elected by us, the people in which we assumed you would be looking out for our best interest. I have done research on this subject matter. Unlike you, our elected officials, where these facilities were built in other cities, the crime rate increased drastically. Two things are going to happen from this decrease in our property value and increase in crime rate. Would you want this in your neighborhood? I would say, no, you would not. Why would you assume we would all want this in our neighborhood, especially after the Ewing Lane residents prevented it from happening? We demand a more suitable location to build this facility in a more appropriate area like down by Kroger's. This whole ordeal has been deceiving and undermining, and we, the residents, will not stand for it. This needs to be resolved, and we are expecting our elected officials to stand with us and provide effective results. Let me remind you, you city council members, you work for us. We are your constituents. You voted for this rezoning under false pretenses, under misrepresentation from the company BWI. After hearing from us tonight, now that you know where we stand and how we all feel, we ask that you take another vote on this subject matter, rezoning, because it seems to me this vote was done in a deceptive way, and we, the voters, will keep this in mind come Election Day and the next election. Thank you. And I have petition here, about a hundred and sixty signatures, that are against this. And this is a copy, okay? We have the original.
Okay, yeah, go ahead and bring it up, and we'll add it to the record. Can you give it to Ms. Carl, the comment? Just for clarification, I want to state that I don't believe we mailed those letters certified. Is that right, Mr. Merkley? I'm just trying to set the facts and the record straight for how the city operates. Mr. Merkley? Thank you. Next up, Sandy Leon? Leon? She passes. Lisa Higdon?
Hi, my name is Lisa Higdon, and I reside at sixteen Louise Street. I just found out several weeks ago, along with all these other people, that they were planning to put this facility back there. My concern is, I do believe these people need help. I worked in the medical field for three decades. I understand, they need help. However, most of these people choose to be homeless. Why do we need to spend our tax dollars to help people who choose to remain homeless? Secondly, we wouldn't have a homeless problem if the sixty-two meth clinic wasn't down there, because we have people coming in from states, plural, not just singular, Kentucky, Tennessee, Ohio, Texas, Georgia. We have people coming in here. No wonder we have homeless on the street. They want their Suboxone. The Suboxone clinics are not lowering the Suboxone, they're raising Suboxone so they can keep their patients there. I have a sign that I recommend that we put up in front of Jeffersonville, because this is how strongly I feel about this. Jeffersonville, give us your homeless and your drug-addicted people so that the local taxpayers can house them, free to all migrant...to our town. Another suggestion, perhaps. Welcome to Jeffersonville, free housing to all the nation's homeless and drug addicts. Come on in, the local taxpayers are looking forward to supporting you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Amel...Amel Haber?
Amel Heber.
Amel Heber.
I'm Elizabeth Amel Heber. I live at thirty-four Center Street. I do oppose all of this. I've been there for forty years. I go down to the park with my grandchildren when they come in town. You all want to turn it in. You all voted to change the zoning to this apartment complex. That is ridiculous. It needs to be single housing. I'm having a problem now on the corner of Long and Center of a person renting out their rooms at their house, there's four apartments in there. rooms at their house, there's four apartments in there.[600.29][600.29](SPEAKING IN HANOS) I thought that was against regulation. And I will be going to get further information about that. My concern is, is that the Turning Point that wants this property to build this, that's a 30-day program, there's no one that gets clean in 30 days. It takes them longer. They give them 30 days, they run all their insurance out, they put them out on the street, and we're supposed to house them down from us. Get a house next to you all, a vacant house, and tell them that you welcome next door to you all. That you all will take four or five of them and let them house there after their 30 days, and you all tell me how well that they've done of being drug-free. And the homeless will always be homeless. I mean, I feel sorry for them, but a lot of them wants it that way, because they don't want to follow rules and regulations. I've worked hard for my house, and I wanted to stay there after I retired. I didn't want another day gone house payment. But that will go, because what you want to do, you want to put that Sandy Heights in ghetto town. We're not ghetto towns. It's bad enough when you all put, allowed the Turning Point and Life Springs to come in there. After they added on, crime rate had went way up. I know for a fact, because my house has gotten broke into.[716.13][716.13](SPEAKING IN HANOS) And the thing of it was, they were gutsy enough to break in while I was sleeping. Now, you all want that next door to you all, in your all's backyard? Think, really think about rezoning, please.
Susan O'Neill?[749.61][749.61](SPEAKING IN HANOS)
Twenty-sixth Industry. So much has been said, I will just say, I hope now each and every one of you realize we do not want it. I'll give my time to Mr. Visson.[772.63][772.63](SPEAKING IN HANOS)
Yeah, you cannot, you have time, but he'll have his.
Oh, but I'll say some more.[778.00][778.00](LAUGHTER) That was going to be nice. We were so uninformed, I know that's been said, so I hate to go down that road, no offense. I think our council person should have let us know. I won't mention names. I'm really disappointed in that, I really am. Can I ask you a question?[808.11][808.11](SPEAKING IN HANOS) Sure. I mean, why didn't you let us know?
Because you saw there was rezoning here today, and I don't want to go back and forth and start opening a lot of questions, but I think everybody needs to see that there's a process that we followed for years and years and years that has worked, and this time it clearly didn't work. So rezoning, the notification, the planning and zoning, and then the city council votes a week or two after, it's never, I don't think since I've been in the council for, you know, all these terms, that this has ever happened. So obviously, there was a breakdown this time that's unique.
You're using up my time. Let me finish this. Did the person, will the councilman that's in the pig area, in the horse area, are they going to talk to their district people? We don't know? The ordinance that you just talked about with the pigs and the cows and the goats, are, will those council people?
No, keep moving along, please.
Will those councilmen talk to their districts? They will? They didn't with us. That's all I've got.[882.99][882.99](APPLAUSE)
Larry Brown?
Yes, my name's Larry Brown, and I live at seventeenth Center Street. And we moved there back in 1982. We raised three kids on that street. Got grandkids now. And it's just not sitting for it. But besides that, it really, I do not believe in my heart that it'll help anybody. And the reason, and I understand the guy back there, but we've lost Ken Fokes, you know, the heroin overdose. I had a brother that, finally, he's 54 now, he's been clean for about four years, and he's been in more drug treatments and more jails than you can probably count on all of y'all strangers. I got a daughter, a 34-year-old, been out there for 10 years. She has a place she can come, and all she got to do is fall a few simple ropes. No drugs in the house. You try to get yourself straightened, you get a job, and you be productive. And to tell people that they can live free, do as they please, that helps not them, it helps not us, it don't help the situation. I laugh with them myself, you see Louisville talk about building lockers. My daughter is store-stuck so many times in places, and they just let them go. It's a joke. I watch, you know, it's this, if you want to help them, force them into treatment, make them stay somewhere for 60 days, 90 days, six months to a year. But to continue to reward bad behavior, it brings on more bad behavior. And, I mean, I do love them. And everybody in here's got somebody that's died or hooked or out there, and, you know, the answer is you got to have a changed heart. And you don't get a changed heart unless life itself changes your heart. And that's the hard way, but that's the only way. That's, you know, so, but it's not a good place for it if you do decide to build it. I mean, you know, it does need to be monitored, there has to be rules, there has to be laws. And without the rules and laws, I mean, you're just wasting your time. That's all I got to say.
Is there a Harry Brown also? Harry Brown and Larry Brown, or did you sign twice?[1044.25][1044.25](SPEAKING IN HANOS) I'm Larry. You're Larry. Is there, and you're at Seventeenth Center?[1048.22][1048.22](SPEAKING IN HANOS) I'm Seventeenth. Is there an Eighteenth Center that signed up here? Okay. All right. Gary Hobbs?
Yeah, Gary Hobbs, Indianapolis, Indiana. And I, first of all, want to say after just hearing all of this, I'm the one that many of you probably just hate at this stage, and I really, my first thing is just to apologize, to be quite frank, there with you. I had absolutely no idea that the letters from the city did not reach you guys and the gentleman that we hired and trusted, and to be quite frank, there was, I even talked to him again today. You know, had the understanding that many of you all were reached and connected and contacted. And I'm just saying, you know, at this stage right now, obviously, many of you have were not. I want to apologize publicly for that piece. On the other hand, I want to make sure that you all know my heart. This is not our first project, helping those that are homeless, helping those that want to see change, because you are right there, some homeless folks that don't want to help, that don't want help. We have four projects that we've done, and they've been very successful so far across the state, where we have seen that lives have changed. And I want that for our community. I'm boarding razors right across the river in Louisville. I want that for our community, the state wants it. The reason why I'm here is because this great city of Jeffersonville has a need for helping those with opioid epidemic. Those have challenges, but don't necessarily have the support systems and the housing to be able to overcome those challenges. And that's something that is part of my purpose, you guys. That's part, that's my heart, to help out your family members that live here, just like I see my brother get help, who was homeless, and he wouldn't hurt a fly. There are some homeless folks that are dangerous, or some folks who aren't homeless, or employees that are also dangerous. We want to target individuals here, a tenant selection criteria that we will put in place with your input, that will allow those individuals that want change and have it in a community that loves them and a community that will support them, connected with a church or multiple churches, that will engage in volunteer activities with these individuals so they can gain full employment, reconnect with themselves, reconnect with their families, and for me, I'm not afraid to say it, reconnect with God. So, public session, May 16th. I want to share more details, share plans, get your input. May 16th, 5:30, at the Optimist Club. At least give them opportunity to hear what we're proposing, get feedback, and then make a final, your own personal final decision. Thank you very much.[1235.75][1235.75](SPEAKING IN HANOS) Mr. Hobbs? Yes, sir.[1239.73][1239.73](SPEAKING IN HANOS) Is this a city project? Um, no, what do you mean by city project? It's not funded by the city.[1246.21][1246.21](SPEAKING IN HANOS) It's funded by the city? No, no, sir.[1248.21][1248.21](SPEAKING IN HANOS) We didn't recruit you to come and do this? No, I wouldn't say you recruited me, no. I mean, that is correct. It was not like somebody just, yeah, that is correct.[1259.71][1259.71](SPEAKING IN HANOS) Contact the city because, what are you applying to? So we're applying for Section 42 tax credits.[1266.88][1266.88](SPEAKING IN HANOS) Where do you apply for that? We apply for that through Indiana Housing Community Development Authority.[1271.42][1271.42](SPEAKING IN HANOS) Indiana. Well, yeah, they're, yeah, the government office in Indianapolis, correct.[1275.83][1275.83](SPEAKING IN HANOS) So no funds, you're not applying to the city? No, we're not asking the city, the city taxpayers like yourself for no money at all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.[1287.51][1287.51](SPEAKING IN HANOS) We have two more names. Kelly D'Atillo.
If I may, I have something for each council member. Thank you. And I apologize, I'm getting over pneumonia, so I may have to take a cough break. I'm here to, Kelly D'Atillo, 236 Megs Avenue. I'm here tonight to speak on the unfortunate anti-Semitic comments made by Lisa Gill at a recent city council meeting. I made several phone calls, and I was surprised but glad that Ms. Gill listened as I expressed my concerns and horror at her words. We had a very open and frank conversation about how amends could be made to those she offended by her comments. I also charged her to make a personal change in her language and to lead the way for the entire city council to have some type of diversity training. The reason for my speaking tonight was the lack of concern other council members expressed over these comments. I was given a variety of excuses as to how or why they might have been said, but I just wanted a resolution, something that would be done to prevent things like this from being said again in a public forum. So why am I so passionate about this? Two major reasons that I would like to share. First, I'm a high school English teacher whose classroom focus deals with justice, empathy, inclusion, and equity. I share with students the exact same handout I offer you tonight, the Pyramid of Hate. As you can see, there are five levels. No one ever starts out at the top with genocide, but through our words, our deeds, laws, actions, attitudes, and even our refusal to stop discrimination and hate speech when we see it and hear it, we contribute to the problem. In light of recent violence at synagogues across the country, it is evident that anti-Semitic feelings are present in our society. Several weeks ago, I came across a Stop Violence poster in my high school that was created by students for National Youth Violence Prevention Week. One morning, as I walked past the poster, something caught my eye, the picture's on the back. It was the words "F. Jews" written across the top. As I moved in closer, the message below it read, "We need Hitler so he can burn the Jews again." These are teenagers. This had to be learned from somewhere. No child is born with hate brewing in their heart. It's learned. So there are folks who obviously believe the world should be better off without people of the Jewish faith. Secondly, I share my life with a Jewish man and his son. We've been together for a few years now, so my eyes have been opened to the various levels of prejudice and off-color comments that are made about him and his heritage. I have witnessed firsthand various stages on this Pyramid of Hate and will no longer tolerate these types of comments, prejudices, actions, and violence. I love Jeffersonville. It's been my home for 48 years, and I want it to remain so.
Mr. Visson, please finish your thought.
I will. I would hope that I live in a place that is not only not prejudiced, but when faced with the prejudices of others, would stand up as one to say that we will not tolerate it in our city.[1505.11][1505.11](APPLAUSE) Thank you.
Last one, Jack Visson, and you only have three minutes, just to be clear.[1516.01][1516.01](SPEAKING IN HANOS) Three minutes to warm up. This doesn't count, this time doesn't count.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me. This is, I feel very strange to be here. I've not received any kind of notice about this. In 1940, my grandfather was eminent domain off of the Indiana Powder Plant and bought 14 acres on Tenth Street. I still have the last five, where my father and mother lived, and where I was raised with my sister, and we have commercial, we have an actual commercial zoning, it goes, we have an exit onto Optimus Drive. We planned that for years and years. We've actually had it listed for sale a couple of times, and the fact that they said I couldn't, they couldn't find me, they didn't know who owned it, and I never got a notice of anything is ridiculous. Anybody in planning and zoning should have known it. I was a former planning and zoning attorney for the city, for God's sake.[1573.01][1573.01](LAUGHTER) You know, yeah, I don't care what's certified, somebody should have talked to me about this. Now, I respect everybody. I'm on the Board of Life Spring, been on it for about 25 years, you know? I support Turning Point. I think it's a good thing to do. We've tried, we detoxed a bunch of people, we saved a bunch of lives. Now, this is not the way this event should have occurred. And if this gentleman from Indianapolis had done any kind of research at all, he would have known, he should have talked with me, should have talked to other people. You know, this is ridiculous to walk in here and hammer this through, thinking this is going to be a good thing. You don't do that without talking to people. You meet. Now, I'm opposed, and, you know, I'd like to make sure, my daughter and son-in-law are here, they bought it, we named a property Bruner Farm. Mel Bruner was my grandfather. He worked here in this building. He was the greenhouse keeper for the Quartermaster Depot. He retired, bought 40 acres up at the Powder Plant, got eminent domain off in 1940. And this is what he can find. He brought his cows and his mules, and he had his little barn down there, and he stayed there to the rest of his life. Now, his daughter was Harriet Utley, married Jim Utley, my uncle. My mom was also a daughter, and they brought the family. Hey, I appreciate your concerns. I appreciate the problem with homeless. I'm willing to work and address it, but I didn't get any kind of notice at all, and that's ridiculous. This needs to stop.
That's the end of public comment, and next up is council comments. But I'm going to first allow the council, if they want to talk on this subject briefly, to go ahead and make a public comment about this subject before we do general city council comments. So is there anyone on the council that would like to make a comment?
There were a couple of things I wanted to say, and I've got a whole list of notes from everybody that spoke today.
Please speak loud, I see people can't hear you.
So, I'm going to try to speak into the mic here. As it was mentioned, this project was slated to go somewhere else in the city before we got to this point, and I was very impressed with the way that the developer, BWI, reached out to that neighborhood and had engaging meetings for the neighbors and took feedback. And once the neighbors, you know, expressed that they weren't interested in having that so close to an elementary school, the developer backed off and said, okay, you know, we're going to, we understand that this is not what the will of our neighbors are at this point. And I was very impressed by that. So when we have a rezoning hearing here in City Hall a month ago, and representatives of that company come and say, we've surveyed the neighborhood, we've gone door-to-door, we've sent out letters, and we've talked to folks, I appreciated that, and I took that at face value. Obviously, that's, I've been misled, as many of you have. I'm outraged to hear that several people got several different I'm outraged to hear that several people got several different stories on what this project was going to be. I agree with you. It's absolutely outrageous, and it shouldn't be tolerated. There were a few things that were, that were said by some of the neighbors tonight that I just wanted to make sure we were clear on, and Councilman White touched on this briefly. But there were, there were several folks who, you know, accused us of wanting to put this in your neighborhood. We've not sought this out for your neighborhood, I promise. No one on this council has said, we should put this project in that neighborhood because that's an open area for sale. This developer has come to us from Indianapolis, and we expected...
Wait, can I say something?
No, ma'am, this is my time. We, we expected that there was some integrity behind what was being presented to us in this chamber from the developer, and, and I'm sorry that we must put that at face value. Additionally, there are no tax dollars or tax credits or tax incentives or anything of the sort slated for any project like this, regardless of where it is in the city. You know, I work on an ambulance full-time, that's what my full-time job is, and I absolutely know that something like this is necessary. But I absolutely want to express that, that I fully believe that everyone has a right here to feel like they've been taken advantage of and misled. And so, if, if there is, there is a next step in this process, as I understand it, a developer would have to submit a development plan for approval. If that submission is made, which I doubt that will happen at this point, but if that submission is made, I would absolutely come to that planning and zoning meeting and ask the planning council to, to deny that plan for this neighborhood. I was told that there's going to be a request for rezoning back to single-family. If that request comes through at our next council meeting or next month, I guess it would have to be in June because of how the process lays out. You know, I would support that. I, I don't think that anybody, I can speak for myself, there was no intention to misguide or push anything through that wasn't going to be accepted by the neighborhood. And I thank everyone for coming out today to make sure that we know how you felt about this. There were several emails that came through over the last week. I, I've answered a couple of those that I got, but, you know, in those emails, I suggested that maybe we should have a public meeting to somewhat help discern, you know, the right information and get that out. I don't know if that's even necessary if, if you've been misled the way you have. So, I appreciate everybody coming. I apologize that this is how this has come about, but, but thank you for coming to make sure that your voices were heard for your neighborhood.
Is there? Anyone else on the council that would like to comment?
I would. If I could talk for a second. First, Gary Hobbs, are you still here? I, I don't know you, sir, but you are a blessing, I think, to whatever communities you serve. I was very impressed with the way you spoke, given the atmosphere, and I think that what you do is needed and, well, bless you for doing it. I think, and I think everybody in this room agrees with that, you know? So, I wanted to say that. Two, another thing, and this seems very odd, but I wanted to share as well, that we say the pledge, we have a prayer, which the Good Rabbi did a fantastic job with that, I thought, today. And also, we all said the pledge. And quite honestly, I don't know if anybody else knows, I was kind of moved by that. That like resonated, like you, I mean, we all like shared that. So, you got to start off at a place where like, we're all together, and I think we all are, and I want to echo a lot what Matt says. The, the process broke down, but as councilperson Estably mentioned earlier, this is a process that has been working. Now, we need to relook at how this process goes about because there was a misrepresentation, and obviously, there was a breakdown. I don't know the details of it. I don't know if it was somebody just doing a lax job or someone being purposefully misleading, but obviously, there is a problem. I mean, we all agree with that, right? So, we're all in agreement with that as well. One thing I did want to kind of, as Matt did, I took notes on every single person that talked, and you'll probably get a letter from me wanting to know what else I can do, and how are we going to keep in touch, and et cetera. But we can't talk, a couple of people, Suzie, who I, I know and think the world of, mentioned, you know, we didn't get reached by your council people. While I represent, each one of us, the six of us represent over 7,000 people, and then three of three over there represent the entire city, which now is probably almost to 50,000 people. That's why the process is important. We can't talk to, I'm not, I'm the guy that's got the cows and the pigs. Remember, we talked about the cows and the pigs? That's a, he has a couple, I have some. I can't call those people. There, there's just not enough time in the day, you know? So, we need to look at our process and how we're going to go forward with the process so this doesn't happen again, because we just simply can't contact every single person that every little thing may affect. So, I wanted to kind of bring that out. And something else that echoes Matt, and I don't mean to just repeat things that Matt says, but I heard a but, but I heard a lot of times, like, you all did this, you did this. You have to remember, we only, as my grandpa used to say, you only know what you know. And we only knew, I came here one night, it was presented, we had the information, I took notes, I did my diligence, I've communicated with several of you in this room since then, kind of explaining that process and how it went. And I think, and I think I would be with Matt, I'd want to hear more about it. I don't even know what the development's for yet. All they asked for was a rezoning change, and they said you guys were okay with it. Given that information, what was the expectation, right? And I understand, I understand. But you only know what you know, and now we know more, and there's a process for that moving forward. Okay. And then, last time, the last thing I want to kind of bring up is, when we voted, and I don't, I don't want to talk for anybody, and I think it was the eight of us that were here, it was a unanimous vote. No one came forward, and I don't know if they came forward in planning and zoning either, but it goes back to that idea of, you know, you know, and now I hope everybody, I teach government, his job's in EMT, I teach government at the high school. I preach civic engagement every day, and look at this beautiful example of civic engagement, and now you're going to know what to look out for, and everybody, if nothing else, will be more informed from this process. All right, I've talked too long, I apologize, but I'm done.
Anyone else on the council that would like to speak?
Yes, I would like to. I have talked or communicated in some way with several of you here. I've given you my phone number, I've accepted your phone calls and emails at whatever time that they come. I've talked with Gary Hobbs of BWI, communicated with him, and I have done the very best that I could do in representing you. When the information comes, I'm also on the board of Planning and Zoning. And when the information came to me, I looked at the information that was given to me, I talked with Gary about that, and since there was no one that was here against that at the planning and zoning or the city council meeting, it got my support. Well, there was no one that spoke up against it. Well, the piece of evidence that you got is the same thing that I got, that I had to make a statement on. And it's not my fault, or Gary Hobbs, well, you know, they hired someone that was supposed to have canvassed the neighborhood, now we find out that was not done. There was someone, and I had been suggesting from day one that there be a meeting in the neighborhood to allow the people in the neighborhood to know what's going to be put there and what was planned. Like they said, there's been a breakdown. And we, that's on the council, done the best we could with the information that we had. That's all that I could say.
Anyone else on the council that would like to make a comment? Then I'll just finish this, this subject. That, I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said. I concur with what every councilperson said here. I think you all feel like you're deceived, you were deceived, as was the council. The council, in the past, the, this process, the communication process, the meeting process, the public input process, worked. Clearly didn't work, I agree with Mr. Hawkins. We need to revisit that and change it so that we don't have this issue again in the future. I'm sorry for your heartache and your time and your, you know, all your worries as a result of this process. But with that, there is going to be a public meeting by the developer for May 16th, 5:30 PM, and there's a process that the mayor has started in, in place to rezone so this cannot happen. And that meeting will be May 28th.
At 6:00.
At 6:00 PM.
About 6:00 in the week?
Yes, about re-zoning it back to our residential.
Mr. Merkley, will, will a notice go out to adjacent property holders since it is a rezoning?
Yes, in fact, we are also considering even broadening the notice for this as well. But obviously, by the room here, they're aware of this. Yeah, there will be a planning commission meeting on May 28th. At that time, the planning commission will take up the matter that the mayor filed today on behalf of the city, which is to rezone this property back to its original zoning classification, which is single-family dwelling. The planning commission then will make a favorable or unfavorable recommendation to you, the city council. Then you will take that up either at your first meeting in June or your second meeting in June. At that time, there will be another public hearing, more public comment, but I would suggest that the residents of this area attend the May 28th planning commission meeting at 6 o'clock in this room, and at that time, we will know for certain when the city council will address the issue in June.
Thank you. So, I think as you can see, many of us feel like we're deceived, and the, and the vote wouldn't have happened the way it happened if the process worked. And we'll look to see, to fix that process so this doesn't happen again. Mr. Ellis, do you want to say something?
Yes. Mr. Merkley, when the notification goes out to the residents, is there a possibility that it could be, either be registered or certified mail?
Well, here's the problem you're going to have with that. I've been doing this a long time. If we're going to require, so what, what happens with, what happens if one person doesn't accept a certified mail? I mean, we have this, we have this problem always, the law in Indiana is, it's not required to be certified mail. Now, it's left to the local governments. If for some reason, the city would like to require to be certified mail, that can be done. But what happens if a person, we sent out, say, for example, 57 certified letters? And what if one person doesn't sign for it? What do we do? Do we not hear it? That, that's the dilemma, that's the dilemma you're, you're going to be in.
By ordinance?
Now, and I want to point out, I want to point out one thing, I mean, this matter has been discussed, this project, and at the time that this developer came to the city, I personally advise that developer, you need to have a neighborhood meeting. Now, why that neighborhood meeting did not take place, I do not know. And why this tactic or this maneuver to have a door-to-door survey to determine whether or not this development is acceptable in this neighborhood, I've been doing this for 20 years, and I've never seen that tactic. You know, I agree with councilperson Ellis, and I've said this for years, I've served on the city council for four years. One reason why there is a requirement, a sign be placed at rezoning properties is because it was an ordinance that I introduced when I was on the city council. The bottom line is, the developer should make every effort to reach out to the neighborhood for development, for these type of developments that are going to create some controversy in the neighborhood. Again, they were advised to do it, they didn't do it. We're going to, we're trying to fix this problem. The only way to fix it is revert it back to the prior zoning classification. That's what the mayor is trying to do. If that happens, we're back to where it was before April 1st.
Thank you. With that, with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to, to general council comments as towards, as we move towards the end of the meeting. So, with that, Mr. White.
No comment.
Mr. Maples?
Completely different topic, but this week, we had two judges that were shot in Indianapolis, and I would like to just have everyone keep them in their, their thoughts and prayers. Both judges, of which are both first-term judges, that have stood in front of this council, trying to help the community in some capacity. It's very unfortunate, they're two community leaders. We could have been in a very bad place if we would have lost both of them, so I would express my concern for them.
Thank you. Can, can you please keep it down? Mr. Hawkins? Are you done, Mr. Maples? Yeah, Mr. Hawkins?
Kelly Yon isn't here today because she's on her honeymoon in New Zealand, and I know she watches this on YouTube, so I just wanted to say happy honeymoon. Hope you get back soon. That's it.
Ms. Gill? Mr. Ellis?
No comment.
Mr. Samuel?
Just want to comment, I was not here at the last meeting, but I was out of town. Apologize for that. I know there was some conversation about the circuit breakers and what the, I believe we were, the city was given, in the minutes I read, about $864,000 or less. And my, as a fiscal body, I think we should not just say we're going to take that out of reserves. I think we should look at, address that issue at some point. Obviously, I'm not going to talk about it much more tonight, but I think I would encourage us to at least think about doing that, and that's our job.
And Mr. Owen, would you like another minute?
Sorry. You asked about the 8th Street drainage project through redevelopment.
Yes.
We're in the design and property acquisition phase.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes.
All right, and my, my comment at this point is, I just want to thank the council for approving the, the money to go ahead and purchase the land at the corner of Worley Road in Charlestown Pike to help with drainage in that, that area, as well as have some green space. So, I think that's going to be a great project. With that?
I wish to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.